Meeting to order. It's a regular meeting of the City Council and a joint work session with Cottonwood Advisory Commission of the City Council, 10/19/2013 at 16:00 in the Council Chamber's Building. City Clerk, please take your role. Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Linsky.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Here.
Councilmember Halliday.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
And Senator Keltzer.
Here.
Thank you. I think the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Sheriff Dowling. Do you know that you're supposed to leave the pledge because somebody made it?
I was on form.
But you can do it on my part, right? And you would please have the pledge on me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's a certificate of appreciation from the City Council that we would like to give to make sure your citizenship. You're welcome. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the Mayor, City Council, and our City Manager. The public body does not propose to discuss deliberating or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summer unless the specific matter is properly noted as for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, council members, just one item that I'll share tonight. As you'll notice, we have our new Christmas lights that the crews have been installing down Main Street here, wrapped around our light panels, which was kind of an extensive project because we didn't have sockets installed in those, and so they had to go back and retrofit them to make them work. So, you know, it was quite a project, but again, a great project that was shared between us and Yavapai Broadcasting, and it'll add to the Christmas light show. Couple other things, Mayor, real quick. Last weekend, we had our disc golf tournament. We had eighty-two participants, and they raised a little over twenty-two hundred dollars for veterans, and so that was a great program. We just graduated another police citizens academy, and that worked very well.
How many graduates?
Only seven.
Okay.
So, we need more interest and more people to get involved in the citizens academy. I know you've been through it, Mayor, and it's a great experience that people really know where it is.
It is a wonderful experience that really helps you understand exactly what our police go through and serve the public.
Excellent. We are hosting this week, on Thursday actually, the Arizona Economic Development Conference, and our own Casey Rooney will be doing a presentation for that on the City of Cottonwood, and then also doing a walking tour of Old Town with several participants. And we anticipate about eighty participants in that group. If you didn't catch it, this weekend in the Arizona Republic, there were the results of the Arizona Republic Wine Competition, and the Verde Valley did very well. And so, if you get a chance, get out there and take the opportunity to taste some of those wines. And I think that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
Thank you. I have the pleasure alone with City Manager Chris Bartasch and Councilmember Mr. Garrison and Mayor Jones to technically groundbreaking ceremony for the wine making in the Southwest Wine Center on the Pat Connaught Campus today. I felt like I was there in two roles, one as a professor at Calhoun and one as a city council person, because we really do work closely with Calhoun and this great relationship that has been. Mayor Jones said that the public groundbreaking that it's a team effort, that some of the people have worked together, and it's just great for the economy and it's great for the whole area of the Verde Valley. So, that was pretty exciting to see some community members up there.
Great. And what about walking the route?
Oh, and walking the route. Recently, we had a very successful active walking on Main Street. I talked to a number of people who come out of town, because again, these events are often just tried to be like used as an excuse to talk to and find out how they like the city, and we had a lot of people come out of town, and some of them have been told of already both rooms in town next month because they want to come back. So, again, we're kind of like showing off our city, and people like it. Some people were surprised, and a cop, and this one guy said, "It really is the coolest city in Arizona." It was great.
All right. Any other notes, council members, vice mayor?
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
I didn't turn my page, so I have a couple more important items. Real important, the rec center, they closed for our annual cleaning between November 24th and December 1st, and the indoor pool will be closed a little bit longer after that as we install the new water feature. And then, just a reminder to everyone who would like to participate in the Chocolate Walk, tickets are on sale on the Old Town Association website, and I would recommend that if you're interested in participating, get your tickets quick.
Because they go fast.
There's only four hundred that are sold. This year, again, on Friday night, they'll be doing the VIP Chocolate Walk, which is wine and chocolate, and I think that's going to sell out quick as well. I think there's not quite as many tickets. I think there's only a hundred-and-twenty-five for the evening.
Is that in addition to the four hundred?
Hundred-and-twenty-five on Friday night.
Oh, Friday night, that's a different night.
Chocolate Walk, and then Saturday night is the four hundred for the record.
I did remember something. We have the Flying High Turkey Drive on Monday from two to six at Crowe Shopping Center. My husband was going all the way to the top of the ladder last year and working my way down, and it's glass, so we need turkeys for the homeless and for the people that can't afford to buy their own groceries. We do a little short list, and basically, we have also, but that's Fridays and Mondays, the 22nd and the 26th.
Okay.
And for lunch, people get to look out to the moon.
Yeah, they did have a little drive-in. And then today, the college, I just wanted to share, because Vice Mayor works at the chamber that I'm a part of, the president and CFO of the chamber gave the Southwest Wine Institute eight thousand dollars, which that, those are the proceeds from the Painted Barrel project. So, that was really great to have that participation. So, we have the Zeepe Taylor BBQ, and I also attended an event on the same day as all of that at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. It was recognizing veterans, and it was actually the Veterans Project where the Savannah Library interviews all of the veterans, and it was just honoring all of those folks that had been interviewed. And we have the Veterans Fall Classic, and Vice Mayor and I went to Veterans Fall Classic and opened up, and our staff really needs to be committed, the City Manager and the governor, and all of our staff, his staff that helps, because they collect items for veterans at the different locations in the city, and then they take over whatever cash donations they earn along with, you know, the things that veterans need, blankets and clothing and that sort of thing, sundry items, and so those, they take over to the veterans' hospitals. So, our staff will really be committed for that, and very much appreciated. I had a regular Arizona mayor's meeting and flight staff this Friday, and we mostly talked about her funding and the sweep of her funds and working as a group of cities in northern Arizona to request from the legislature that, please, it's time, because our local, our local streets are being impacted by the sweeps. The fact is, is that in the long run, it hurts business, it hurts economic development. They also requested that the different chambers and the different economic groups also get together and let the governor and the legislature, which I made a request for them to do that, and it sounds like they're planning to do that, so that may be helpful to us, to have others besides just the governor, you know, telling the impacts of sweeping our street's funds. And the fact is, is that our citizens pay for those funds when they go to the fill-up of gas here locally, and they're not getting any kind of benefit from that, that funding. So, hopefully, things will get better in the state and they'll be able to let us have our higher revenue. Okay, that's our report for this council meeting. The next item is introduction of a new employee, and that first was a firefighter. Chief Kirkendall.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our newest full-time firefighter, Chris Rice. Chris is a local boy, born and raised here in Cottonwood. In fact, he's third generation raised in this area, graduated from Mingus Union High School, played three sports, and as he wrote in his bio for me, most importantly, that's where he met his wife. He's been married for eight years, he has four children, three girls and a boy. He completed the Yavapai College Firefighter Academy and his EMT through Yavapai College, started with us in May as a volunteer, and then successfully through the testing process, began with us full-time October 20th of this year. We see him as a real addition to our firefighting force, and it's always nice to have someone that's a local, raised in the area, and to succeed and come on board with us.
Any comments? Mr. Rice?
Yes, I'm just glad to have this opportunity to be a firefighter here. Chief said I grew up here, my family's been here for a long time, really seen a lot from the community, you know, Mingus, Boy Scouts here and everything, so I think this is a great opportunity to begin giving back, serving my community.
Well, far and good, and we wish you the best of everything, you and your family.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like a great addition. So, if the child could take a picture of Chief and City Manager and Chris and his brothers in the firefighting, if you all want to come up. It's now clear. Their photo, um...
You can stand by.
Do a couple there, I'm sure you'll catch all. Do a couple, because somebody will have one I quote.
And I'm going to scoot over here so I can get a little bit down. There you go. Thank you. Good job, Chris.
Thank you all for being there. Okay, our next presentation, and I would like to thank Councilmember Terrence Pratt for making this request to be such of the item. We have with us tonight David and Brownie, regarding Steps to Recovery Homes. Mr. Brownie.
Hi. I got my little presentation here. Hi.
Hello, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Oh, so I gave everybody one of these, so I'm just going to go through this. This is our executive summary. We've been open since August 1st. We're in Old Town. The long-term goal of Steps to Recovery Homes is to create a healthy, safe, and structured environment for our clients, to help our community by giving an opportunity, giving people an opportunity to become productive members of society, lower the recidivism rates in the community. Steps to Recovery Homes is a viable placement for those who are serious about changing their lives. What this is, is it's a place for people with substance abuse issues to come, and it's kind of like, we do a lot of things there. They come in for three months to six months, and we have them get involved in the community, we have them do community service, we have them get a sponsor, we have them start working some steps, get involved, go to some meetings, give them some kind of structure, change their lives. We do a life coaching session every morning with them from nine to ten, and we work on them with like relationships and financing, hygiene, health, a lot of stuff that a lot of these people that were, had substance abuse issues don't really have the structure and the ability to do, you know, so we help them with that. And we're really example-driven. Me and my fiancee, Ann Vickers, started this. We've both been through that and came out of it, so we kind of just try to give them what, the way we've gotten our lives back together, you know. One of the ways is by serving the community and being a productive member of society and learning to take care of our health and learning to finance and budget our money and just a lot of these things that we help them with. The location is, the Hope, it's called, we call it the Hope House, right here in Old Town. It's in historic Old Town Cottonwood, 748 North Main Street. This location is the, in the heart of the beautiful Verde Valley of Arizona. We believe that this location is centrally located to help the clients acquire employment, the homeless close to many resources and the Cottonwood Area Transit for better, to better assist our clients. It's really, one of the reasons we really wanted that location is because it's by a lot of resources, like the Catholic Charities, the mission, the food bank, help them get on their feet, and then they go, you know, then they start becoming fully self-supporting because that's what we encourage. I think, I think it's awesome being able to be a part, be a part of the Old Town like that, you know. We are really new, we have been kind of getting the word out, we just built up, we have six, six beds for women and six for men, and we're full. And a lot of people are, man, they're changing their lives around, and in three months, there's about three or four people that have been there three months, and now they're working and they're, they're just, they're being, you know, they're getting involved with their families again. You know, it's not just about being a productive member of society, but a productive member of your families too, you know, being able to start being there for your children and your significant other and your, you know, your moms and your grandmas and all this other stuff, you know. The company Steps to Recovery Homes was formed by Ann Vickers and Damian Brownie. We both have been through hardships and have changed our lives, become an asset to our community and our families. The decision to open this business did not come lightly, it was one that came straight from our hearts. Our goal is to always build healthy relationships with the public and work in cooperation with others. Together, we have a vision of helping our clients to help not only themselves, but also to learn how they can help others. Our services, we provide a comfortable, safe, structured, drug-free, including alcohol environment for those willing to change their lives for the better. We teach them how to become fully self-supporting and responsible, to provide community, our community with two-hour, with a two-hour-a-week commitment provided by each resident, free of charge. You know, that's pretty cool, you know, they, we really encourage them to say, "What do you guys want to do?" Like, one of our clients went down and helped feed the homeless, you know, and they really liked that, like being able to give back. Last weekend, about eight of them went down and picked up trash at Riverfront Park, you know. You know, it's really cool, they really feel good about themselves being able to do that.
And we need, we need help with the community.
With what? You know, anything you guys...
On the same way.
No, we're looking for resources. We're really new, and we're evolving, you know, this is new to us. What we've done is there's some other halfway houses in the, in the community, and what we've done is we've kind of made a hybrid, and me and my fiancee have had a lot of ideas that we brought to it, like, a couple of things we do is like, the community service is a big one for us, you know, by being a service to our community. Another thing we do is we do a financial savings budget, they can put money in, like, if they put in twenty-five dollars extra a week, we half that, and we put it in a savings plan, and then in six months, they have money to get out and get their own place, you know what I mean? So, and then we have a garden, and we grow, we're growing food, and we're giving the food, what we don't use, we're giving to the homeless, so we're doing a lot of stuff like that. And then the life coaching, the life coaching's huge, you know, like Terrence, I've had Terrence come down. We're looking for people in the community that have something to bring, like any kind of life skills, like financing, relationships, parenting, anything like that. We're looking for help, anybody wants to donate at that time. We do it from nine to ten, Monday through Friday, and if I don't get anybody, I do most of it, me and my fiancee, you know, we try to help them as much as we can.
And Catholic Charities have, I don't know if you collaborate with them, they have a wonderful program, finance program.
Yeah, actually, they're having one tonight. They came over today, they've been coming over, so I've been getting in touch with them, which is really cool.
Great.
We do personal life coaching and finances, education, hygiene, understanding, recovery, communication, relationships, parenting, job skills, resumes, interview, presentation, self-acceptance, boundaries, and goal setting, and a lot more. Our commendations, the Hope House provides spacious living, the men's area is a two-bedroom apartment on the top floor, which includes a large deck. The women's area is a two-bedroom apartment on the bottom floor, which includes a fireplace. There's a central common area available for all of our clients, which includes the lounge room and an additional bathroom. There's an onsite office, parking, garden, barbecue, large backyard, block walls, and iron gates surrounding the home to provide security. Common area transits and resources are within walking distance. Our mission statement, our mission is to provide a safe environment, free from any illicit drugs or alcohol for people with substance abuse issues. We are dedicated to consistency, structure, and direction in our homes. Conclusion would be, we believe the assistance that we offer to our clients will be beneficial to them. By setting an example and providing direction, we know that our clients can become assets to their families. They can also become responsible, accountable, and find integrity in their own lives and in the eyes of the community. We understand that many people have missed certain building blocks in their lives. We believe that people really want to change, but are lacking the guidance and the environment to do so. We provide that environment. We know from our own experience that it is possible, and we know we will be able to help. A big thing with us, like I said, we're example-driven, and like, me and my fiancee have been through some, some heavy drug addiction and came out of it, and we're productive members of society today. I'm actually a full-time student at NAU, I've gotten an associate's degree through Yavapai College and some other awards. And, you know, we're just trying to give them what we have, you know, and because, because it's important, it's a big problem in our community, in the world, you know, the drug addiction's a big, huge problem, and we're just trying to do what we can to give back and help people out. You know, we have a website, I handed out some cards to everybody. I really don't, don't know, Terrence said I should come give a presentation, so I kind of walked through some fear to come up here and do this, so, I don't know. Do you got any questions?
Mr. Pratt?
I've got a few comments. David, I, I think what you do is very commendable, you really touched my life, you know, you really turned yourself around, you came to Yavapai College, you were a great student, you were a role model for other people, you won awards, and I've been down in your house and talked to the people behind you, so you've been a great source for the community, and it makes me proud to be associated with you. And I think it's great to bring me and Seavers from the community, so keep up what you do. Thanks.
Having you some help can make a huge difference.
Yeah, you know, and I did one of these presentations for a leadership class, and they asked me, you know, what did I, what I need from them, and it's just, you know, just people to be interested and come donate maybe an hour, an hour time, you know, if you have something, like if you're, you know, something about parenting or goals, education, finances, you know. All these, all these things, you know, are so, so helpful, because that's what we feel that, you know, if, when I was new into recovery and changing my life around, you know, I had a really hard road, I had a really hard life, and if I had these little things, it would have helped so much more, you know.
I've known Ann, your fiancee, for a number of years, and I've never known her to be anything but an inspiration beyond the people. Thank you.
She inspires me too. Yeah, we, you know, and it is, it's a good thing, you know, it really feels good, we're helping some people out, we're doing the best we can, you know, we're not perfect in our lives, but, you know, we spend a lot of time with the people, so, and we're actually looking at opening a couple other places, because we've been having to turn them away lately, and it's really upsetting to turn anybody away.
It sounds very structured and managed and a benefit to the community, so thank you for thinking of others and living, living that by what you do. Any more questions from council members or comments? Any questions or comments from members of the public? If not...
Just you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brownie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is presentation of a check to the city by Don Fishel, who is the Regional ASA Commissioner, from the Amateur Softball Association of Ameriak. Mr. Fishel?
Kind of tough to follow such a great thing there, but what I wanted to do, I particularly wanted to come by this evening. As you say, I'm Don Fishel, I'm the Arizona ASA State Commissioner. I've been involved with ASA since 1984, I worked for four cities, always involved in ASA. And about four years ago, I started getting with your Parks and Right Department, and we started registering all adult teams, ASA, and from that point, because you're partnering with that, I talked to Ryan Bigelow and the staff to see about running a Invitational Girls Fast Pitch Tournament here, and I wasn't sure how it was going to go. And when I came up here, first of all, I... And when I came up here, first of all, I wanted to know if I could bring up fire, fire chief.
Police chief.
Police chief.
He wishes.
I've seen all... Anyway, and, you know, I didn't tell it to myself, but anyway, what was so amazing was when I came here for the tournament, and it was a small tournament the first time, we only had 13 teams, but I started out doing some Invitational tournaments, and prescott with 13, 14, I've gotten them up now to where there's 50 some odd teams, 49, 50, a lot of economic impact. Anyway, I was wondering how the fields would be and how, how we'd be able to work, and he's, he was out there the entire weekend, working, unbelievable. You and your staff, the most important thing, one thing that I required is fields to be done very well, and they were done excellently. We used the Little League fields, they were fantastic, I actually worked with the Little League staff, they did a great job opening concessions. And I think some of you, hopefully any of you were there, the place was packed with just 13 teams. We had teams from all over, we had teams from the Globe, Surprise, Wickenburg...
Excuse me, two from Las Vegas.
Two from Las Vegas. So, I think we've started something. I would love to do it again in October, to keep it going, going, getting bigger, we'll be having to use your other foreplex at some time. You know, maybe, maybe someday down the road, you might want to think some portable fencing, not tomorrow, but once we start showing that we're getting more and more, it's always, believe it's important to have portable fences out there for the girls. If they hit a ball over the fence, it's pretty cool. 10, 10-year-olds, we sometimes will put fences up at 175. I've seen a couple of 10-year-olds hit home runs, they never forget that. But anyway, the fields were fantastic, your, your location is great. Just to let you know, I'd like to have bigger tournaments down the road here, I think we may want to do one in the spring, we'll have to see if it's available. It's a good location from the interstate, the, the weather's fantastic, it's a good, it's a good city. And I now know that you've got staff here that are tremendous, and is a good place to run. So, what I wanted to do is, first of all, I wanted to present a plaque that says Cottonwood 2013 Girls Fast Pitch Softball Classic, Arizona ASA and City of Cottonwood Partnering. So, Madam Mayor, could I go ahead and give you this? And also, out of a small tournament, we partnered. In other words, one of the most important things we did was we partnered it to where we ran the tournament, we took the, all the funds, we paid for the, all the stuff, your staff took care of the fields, prepped the fields, had the lights, out of 13 teams, running a good tournament, we gave out lots of awards, we gave, we only had three 10-year-old teams, and we still gave the second team's medallions. So, we're giving out lots of good things. I have a check here for $1,173 for being a partner with Arizona ASA for the first time ever, ASA Invitational, and so I'd like to, if I could, give this to you.
And council, your own comments?
Yes.
Council members' comments?
Sure.
Working the past with the board of boards, and I think council member Pratt and council member Daley, and the vice-mayors.
Okay, so I'm sure you appreciate this, this is the crowd. You've got to produce that.
So, this cannot happen without you.
No, and you need, please, is there anything you'd like to say about the tournament?
This is, we would not be receiving this if it weren't for the chief.
No, no, you wouldn't.
That's right.
The chief and them, they took care of it, and have you got anything to say?
I'd do it for the kids.
So, if you would come up here?
There you go. So, would you like me to just...
Please, turn around.
Turn around, okay? And should I give you this? Who should take the check?
The chief.
I think that Jody should touch that for, because he earned it. So, Jody, you're not like, maybe...
No, I'm not blocking, I can see that.
Is there a seat I can...
Okay.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you very much, everybody.
This is beautiful.
Thank you. Good staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I enjoy it.
All right. Madam Mayor, if I could kind of give a little bit of history on it?
If you, if you would, and if the chief would just like, chief, you're not going to be there. We know, we know you don't like the light shining on you, but you still deserve this. Please.
Thank you.
Now, this actually started when the chief came to, who's been involved in probably just about every sport here in the city, either playing in the south or coaching his kids and everybody else's kids. He came to me and was just concerned about the condition of the Little League fields in particular, and, and for some reason, I think he must have been a groundskeeper in former life or something, but he absolutely loves doing this, and he volunteered to get out there and take care of it, and so he worked with Dan Luter and his people, and I was actually kind of amazed at how knowledgeable he was about grass and dirt and, and I'm almost beginning to think he makes a better groundskeeper than the police chief.
I knew that was coming.
But again, he has done this on his own time, he loves doing it, he really gets a lot of gratification out of it, but more importantly, we're getting a reputation of having some fields that are just top-notch in terms of competition. He has already come to me and said, "We need to look at the softball fields," talked about the fencing, so I've asked him to put together a, a capital list, and we'll certainly be looking at that as a way to, to get those up to speed, and it's something we've already talked about in terms of the condition of the dugouts and those kind of things, and so, we're going to go to work on it, but many thanks to the chief for all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Bartosz. It's all about the kids, as, as you know, if, if the kids are doing something, then my people aren't, and, and that's, that's what it's about. I do, I do enjoy watching the kids play ball, it's, it's gratifying for me to see them smiling and having fun. I do want to continue there, I've been approached, after our Little League All-Star Tournament, we hosted the state tournament here this year, and since then, there is a company out of Phoenix, it's called TCS, that wants to run three tournaments up here this year. They heard about our complex, they came up, they seen our complex, they want all eight fields, so I'm working with them to bring in temporary fencing for their eight field, for the other four fields, so they can run it on all eight fields. They're looking at 30 to 40-team tournaments, which is just a huge financial boost to our economy, because it's families that come and stay. When I travel with my kids, it's a typical weekend, it's $400 to $500 for a weekend. Krista is fully aware of this, her parents are fully aware of it, so, it's, it's financially, it's, it's good for the city, and it really doesn't cost the city a whole lot, other than the staff time to take care of the fields, which, right now, is unfortunately free.
Now, here's the, let's say, haven't I heard that you're out there at 4:00 in the morning sometimes, so that you get your work done on time?
During the season, yeah, I start at about 4:00.
We really appreciate you, and it does bring, you know, economic vitality to our community, like you said, when people do come, they eat, they get gas, they stay in a hotel, and it benefits the children, and that, like you said, that, in a nutshell, is exactly what it's all about.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you for your...
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I think he's so appreciative that the staff has come up with a nickname for him, he's known as Mr. Mealdy. If you look on the back of his new gator, there's an Arkansas license plate that says Mr. Mealdy.
Great good time, great good time.
Thank you.
Please try to live up to it.
Yes, I will.
Okay. The next item is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on any item that is listed on the agenda. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, so we may not respond to any of these comments. Comments are alleged to involve a time period. Okay, our first speaker is Bonnie Jones of Cottonwood. And if you could, I don't want to state your name, but if you could state your address for the record.
My address is 727 North Main Street, Lot 2, Cottonwood, Arizona, and I first would like to say thank you so much to all of you and Jody for the increased vitality, health, and safety of Cottonwood that I have observed over many years. Mr. Fanning gave a speech at a Neighborhood Watch to inform us what it was about, Neighborhood Watch Potluck back in 1997 or 98, and I was so pleased when you came and when he came. Oh, anyway, that's, I'm here to speak about the, I just recently became informed about the detriment to health of the smart meters that APS is intending to spread around the Verde Valley soon, if they haven't already, and being a retired RN, I'm particularly quite concerned about maintaining both my own health and the health of the community, and I under, I have not heard of, I've not been aware of any credible studies that have been done on the health of these smart meters, and there are many people who have experienced many difficult health problems from it. And I understand that Sedona has written a letter to the Arizona Corporation Commission, and I would like the city council to consider looking into the safety of these and of helping citizens who choose to opt out, not having to be charged for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate them. Patrice Roma, if you would come to the left here and state your address for the record.
Hi, my name's Patrice Roma, Cottonwood resident, longtime. I was grateful to our city manager for enlightening me right before the meeting in regards to your status on the smart meter issue being more irrelevant after the ACC comes back with their study, which I appreciate, however, I hope it's not too late. I would like to open up the discussion by putting it on the agenda. I was grateful to the communication, I don't want to beat my head against the wall about this or have anybody else annoy you, but it is, it is important to our community, and I would like to somehow open up a discussion in, in, in a holistic manner. So, having said that, I'm going to let that rest for now until I understand more and get better guidance. So, I want to now switch gears and talk about the water. I just got my first water bill with the raised rates, and it was $140.78. I have been gifted with my mother's property, which is substantial in old growth of an orchard and several, let's just say the local airport uses my trees as a guidance into the landing strip, that's how tall they are, and so, there's lots of fruit, rose bushes, many types of trees. My mother was an organic gardener, and I have been left with her legacy and a lot of gratitude, but now I have to pay for it. So, when I did the math, I paid 69 cents a gallon for this water, and I'm like, what? So, I'm proposing for our city council to consider a low-income fee structure for our water. Not everybody can afford and weren't prepared in the long term for having to, you know, have to pay for these old trees that have been here, our trees have been here since 85, and I'm sure there's a lot of big trees that, you know, we don't want to cut down for the beauty of our city, so, but I'm living on $600 a month. That's a huge amount to pay for, for, for living on this amount. So, that brings me to my previous request to opt out for the sewer fees, because I've already been exempt in '05 because of those trees and not being able to hook up to that. Got it? So, anyway, I'm paying for the sewer through the water, hoping that you'll exempt me from the hookup fees, for any fees on the sewer, and put a discount for water into your consideration or on the agenda or whatever you do for the citizens of our town in the low-income area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Sherry, is it Sherry Woods?
Sherry.
Sherry Woods, if you would come up and state your address for the record.
Hi, I'm Sherry Woods, my address is 126 North Verde Heights Drive in Cottonwood. And I was here two weeks ago, same issue, smart meters. I don't want to be obnoxious, and I don't want to be a pest, but I'm here once again to ask, please, that two of you will stand up and allow, just allow, the whole smart meter issue to go onto the agenda. There's been just tons of articles in the paper, everybody's talking about it, I mean, literally standing in line in the supermarket, people are talking about it. And, you know, you probably have your opinions, or you probably have decided on a course of action, or you're waiting maybe for the ACC, but in the meantime, you have a whole community that wants to talk about this, and they have various concerns. Some of them are concerned, you know, the smart meters will come in and they'll maybe be allowed to opt out, and they won't be able to afford the opt-out fees, and then they're going to feel that they were short-changed. Some people are concerned about the health effects, and, you know, maybe they opt out, maybe they even pay opt-out fees, but their neighbors don't. I mean, there's just, there's just so many different concerns, and if only the community could be able to talk, that's all, that's all I'm asking. So, anyway, I thought, maybe you didn't have enough information. So, I brought for you this evening some information, I think I have enough for everybody, I've got 10 copies here, if you could pass them around, please. It's from the county of Santa Cruz, from Santa Cruz Unincorporated. It's not a city, but it's really a larger area, and what these documents will do, it's, it looks like a lot, it's 18 pages, but it's brief reading. They'll walk you through what Santa Cruz did to address it with their utility company, and what ultimately happened, and how they addressed it with their, with their commission also. And it goes through the back and forth between the county administrative office and the Board of Supervisors, and there's eight pages of that, and then, on about the 10th page, you get into what the county of Santa Cruz decided. It's the memorandum, and it's, it's Attachment B. And then, you scroll back a few pages in Attachment B, and you get three pages, and this is especially why I wanted you to have it, you get three pages of references, of how they came to the conclusion they came to, which was that smart meters are not healthy. Doesn't mean they didn't end up with them, but they decided that they were an absolute health risk, and there are... It's the memorandum and it's Attachment B. And then you scroll back a few pages in Attachment B and you get three pages, and this is especially why I wanted you to have it. You get three pages of references of how they came to the conclusion they came to, which was that smart meters are not healthy. Doesn't mean they didn't end up with them, but they decided that they were an absolute health risk. And there are three pages of references of all the scientific papers, documentation that they addressed to come to that. So I know, you know, a lot of people say there haven't been any studies done. There haven't been any studies done where these smart meters have been put in neighborhoods in the United States and somebody's studied those people's homes. We haven't had those. They've had them in Europe. But there have been tremendous amounts of studies on the radio frequencies that are used in the smart meters and how they affect people at a cellular level, how they can affect them with heart attacks and with different kinds of cancers and things. And if anybody cares to know, you can look at any one of these articles that are referenced in these three pages. And, you know, that's your scientific data, not your paranoia or not people's fearfulness, but actual scientific data. So I thought that that might maybe influence two people to stand up and allow this to move forward and be put on the agenda so that the community can come and at least express their feelings and we can have an exchange. And that's it. Thank you very much. And as always, I am just very, very happy to be a Cottonwood citizen. I can't tell you how happy I am.
You're happy you are too.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bowman, if you would come up to the left here and state your address for the record.
Did I say it right, Bowman? Bowman.
Bowman, okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and residents. I was here at one of the last meetings and I asked you to consider what life would be like. 1330 North Oak Parkdale Highway, about a half mile from the town.
Okay, so you live out of the city? You live in the city?
I'm right at the edge of the city.
Okay, you're close. Thank you.
And what I did at that time is ask those here to consider what life would be like if they were not able to have the benefit of all the modern conveniences that we have today, i.e. computers, cell phones, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I also wanted to express the issue of the fact that those people who suffer from environmental illness or sensitivities to these kinds of fields, that they should be considered having some exception and not having to pay for that exception. And I don't know how that would occur, but I'm asking that the council consider it and think how that might occur, if they would. In addition to that, what I'd like to do now, and I will appear here other meetings also, and I'll give you in snippets, a personal story. And it starts off with a couple that get married in 1959 and everything looked rosy and gray. And one of the spouses graduated from the University of Connecticut with a bachelor's science degree in business administration, became a second lieutenant in the United States Army, was in the Army for three years. And then became a member of a retail facility and was with that company for 17 years. The other spouse, in the meantime, engaged with her schooling, got a bachelor's in photography and then a master's in fine arts and photography and worked in non-silver process. But what that, and what happened during that process, while she was working in that field and was exhibited in art museums in Europe and in the United States and sold work for that which she did, she became sensitive. And at a certain point in time, she could no longer work in her adopted field. So what then occurred was that one spouse went off and worked for the government, federal government Veterans Administration, and worked in various positions, became a district manager, director in Washington DC, and then ultimately worked as a liaison with members of Congress, the secretary of Veterans Administration, undersecretaries for health and benefits. And during that process, the spouse that had worked in fine arts decided that she still wanted to give to the community. So she then decided that she would work as a teacher. And she got a certificate in teaching and started at a high school teacher and thought that she would teach photography. Unfortunately, because of the sensitivity, she had to stop that and give that up. So then she decided she would teach elementary school in art. And did well with that, but then the sensitivities became so great that she had to stop that as well. She was diagnosed in 1998 as environmentally ill. During that period, she visited many traditional doctors and non-traditional doctors, tried all kinds of traditional methods of medical healing and alternative methods of medical healing, and nothing really worked at that particular time. Anyway, her career wound up in shambles. The other spouse continued to work doing, as what I had already mentioned, for about four or five more years. She became so ill that the ultimate occurrence was that they had to sell their house because she could no longer live in it. She couldn't listen, she couldn't use a telephone, couldn't be near a stove, couldn't listen to television, couldn't listen to a radio. When the house was sold, that couple lived in a van, a Volkswagen pop-up camper, in the winter and summer, could not have heat, could not have air conditioning, and lived that way for four years and came out to Arizona and then finally found Cottonwood and built a nontoxic home that she could live in. So ultimately, what happened is what started out to be a bright future for these, bright future for these people, did not wind up that way. So I'll stop now, next session, five more minutes.
You can finish it, yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate your comments. Okay, the next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Member 5, 2015. Another two minutes, if you continue, if you have two minutes. If not, I interrupt the motion.
I move, uh, Dowling to approve the minutes.
Mr. Dowling, the motion is to be accepted and on the table. The opposed motion carries. Okay, with this, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Resolution number 2724, appointing members to the Youth Advisory Commission. Mr. Vesakaya, and maybe Alan.
Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity. A little brief history on the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. This has been a group since 2005 that has served the council and served the citizens of Cottonwood. Distinguished history, thousand hours, a year of service, multiple thousands of dollars donated to organizations throughout the Verde Valley. Ambition winners of the Governor's Volunteers' Award last year, a very small distinguished group that received this award. Today, we are here to reappoint members from last year, recommend members, new appointments for this year. The process for which the commission receives new applicants, interviews, and then scores applications, very stringent. We receive probably 20 applicants a year. It's highly coveted to be on the youth commission. We have 100% placement rate at college. Each one of these commissioners, applicants, show up to the commission meeting, are put through an interview process that's scored out. The applications are scored anonymously, those scores are put together and that kind of helps decipher for the commission who's on the commission, who's not. Keep in mind that if you look at your attachment, Brianna Strobel, even though she scored high, was not added to the list. The commission decided that since she's a senior in high school, she would only have a limited amount of time as a commission member and she'd be served better as an alternate. So keep that in mind. So with, that said, the commission would like to reappoint or recommends to reappoint Charles Novak, Shayla Dowling, Parker Flick, Rachel Valentine, Carrington Midkiff, Wyatt Midkiff, some apologies if I butcher this.
Sirlock.
Sirlock. Krista Earl, Marshall Schill. In addition to, they would like to appoint, recommend to appoint, Ryan Young, Jasmine Banks, Kaylee Gordon, and Kristen Conover. At this time, and then Gabrielle McCouch, who was an alternate last year, commission is recommending to appoint her. This time, we're going to call Marshall and Shayla Dowling, our president and vice president. They're going to call up each one of the new members or new applicants so they can be introduced.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Our first on new member will be Ryan Young. Will you please come up?
Hi, my name is Ryan Young. I am very happy to be part of this new commission and to be able to help and serve our, serve our community because it's always nice to get back to community. I've lived here for seven years and I've always been trying to help my best and this is a great opportunity to be able to do that.
Your comments.
My name is Shayla Dowling, the president of CYAC. Nice to be in front of Madam Mayor and you council members. Next, we are doing, we are calling up Jasmine Banks.
Hello, I'm Jasmine and I've lived here for about nine years and, um... I'm very grateful for this opportunity to be in CYAC so I could help and participate in the community because I really do love this area and I'm very grateful.
Our next member, Kaylee Gordon.
Good evening, I'm Kaylee Gordon and I've been here for nine years and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be in CYAC because I love being a part of something bigger and the commission is allowing me to do that and be a bigger part of my community and I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And last, we'll call up Kirsten Conover.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Conover. I've been a resident in Cottonwood for 13 years now, so I've lived here practically my entire life. I am really thankful for the opportunity to be able to help Cottonwood in a much more public manner than I have been, rather than just at school. And I'm a junior at Mingus, so thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, ask for council's recommendation on our new applicants. With that, we'd also like to appoint Kirsten Jones as our adult representative, replacing Brittany Lawler, who is now in Australia. It's kind of hard to do those duties from Australia.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Jones and I've been helping to oversee the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission since July and I found it to be really a great experience and a great opportunity for us to give back to the community and try to do some good things. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council, if there's any questions, if you'd like to pull up any applicants, ask questions to them, as now's the time, I guess.
Mr. Pratt.
I just have a comment. I think it's great that so many of our young people want to get involved in the community. For one, I really appreciate your service. And I also think that this is probably one of those no-brainers.
And just to kind of highlight the council and Mr. Garrison is new, so this is his first time here, but appointing this particular board. But I know that one, I guess, the vision of this, I mean, I guess, kind of the brand, no, what am I trying to think of? Dreaming big, you know, it's what they, their motto, I guess, is what you'd call it. And also, if you would kind of explain, I know that it's in the packet, but this process is, tries to be fair to all of the applicants. You have 20 applicants, but there's part of it that the names are removed, the written part. They're scoring, they don't, they don't know whether it's their best friend or a person that they barely know, they're scoring blind. And they do for, they do know, of course, the verbal part of the test. They know who they're speaking with. But I do, I have attended at least one of their sessions and I felt that it was a very fair process, that they really, the youth were being fair to all the applicants as they applied. And so I was very pleased with that and I think they do a great job for us, you know? I don't know, I think that the Vice Mayor was on the council and Councilmember Howie Hughes on the council. Who else when we appointed the youth commission? We're reporting. And it was a process that, it was at least seven years ago, six years ago, because Brian Mickelson was the city manager at the time, probably seven years ago. So it, you know, it was, we had a lot of recommendations from the folks who were promoting this. And Brian took it and said, "This is how I would like to do it." And we, as a council, gave the youth commission a lot of power, I would say, to create their own commission, to make suggestions to the council, to create kind of their own rule system. And it worked because they are the only youth advisory commission left in the Verde Valley. And at the time, I believe that each community had one, possibly at least Cottonwood, I think, Parkdale may have, and Sedona. And I know that Harvey Grady was there and he was trying to get it throughout the Verde Valley, the youth commission started to reach the communities. But I think our youth commission is a test to a model that works and it's been very fruitful and the kids have really accomplished a great deal and they are very professional, they learn a lot, they not only learn a lot, a lot is expected of them. How many meetings can they miss before they're not allowed to do things?
Technically, zero.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
We have a high retention rate and because we have such a stringent requirements for the commission, we're able to get 1,000 hours out of them, we're able to get them into college, teach them responsibility. When they're late to a meeting, they have to stand up and present to the group why they're late because there's accountability there. And by enforcing that, they're hopefully going to be successful later on in life. Madam Mayor, if you remember, a couple of years ago, when we actually went back and found the old members that had been on the commission, we found that there are professors in Ireland, they work for senators, they work for the state of Arizona, they're architects, they're working on their law degree, working on being a doctor's. I mean, we're producing young leaders and that's what's important here.
And not every, you know, sometimes we say that it's, everybody has a 4.0 grade point average, but I don't think that's true. And there are a lot of young people who have had challenges and overcome them. You know, it's, it's people just learning the process of life and giving so much back to it. So I think that I can speak for all of the council members. They really appreciate them and what they're doing in the community and the paths they're taking in their lives. Many people who are in, participated in the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, there have been some that got full ride scholarships. And so that's been beneficial to the students to participate and put those things on their college applications, all the thousands of hours that they've given to the community. So, any questions, Mr. Garrison?
My training survey with the school board was fantastic and the best part of every meeting was the beginning of our meetings when we would have a group of students come up and talk about what they were doing to be engaged within the schools themselves. And sometimes it leached out into the community, but mostly it was school time endeavors and that was always rewarding to sit up there and understand why we were there doing what we were doing. It was to help engage the students. And this is neat to see that they not only took that but as they moved from being youth and children in the grade schools, moving into the high schools and becoming young adults, still remain committed to helping their community and those around them. And I, it's just unfortunate that there's not a place at the table for every single young people that's applied for this position because it'd be great to be able to foster that many more young minds and bring out much more energy into the town. Hopefully, those that don't make it into this group will find another way to continue to support and work within the community. So I applaud what you do and thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Pratt, would you?
Oh, we'd be very fortunate.
As soon as we allow the public a chance to speak. So thank you very much for your time and your energy, and we're wishing you a very successful year.
May I say something to Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Shayla Dowling. As you know, I just wanted to speak to Madam Mayor today and say thank you, because four years ago, I was a freshman at Mingus Union High School. I didn't really know what I wanted to do with my future, what I wanted to strive for. And then I had met Mayor Jones through the water audit when I was in eighth grade, and then my freshman year, she said, you should be in Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. She gave me the application, I filled it out, I began as, I began as an alternate for CYAC, and now this is my fourth year on, and I am now the president. And currently today, I did apply for Yavapai College to go to school to become a social worker, and I don't think I could honestly have ever gotten there without the help, the help and the support of Mayor Jones. I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I also want to thank my father, Jesse Dowling, who's a council member, for always being there and supporting my dreams. And I could have never made it here without you, and I love you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I would also like to thank you as well. This commission, I'm very thankful for you actually considering this and actually putting this into our community, because I moved here from Camp Verde when I was little, and we never had anything like this at all. And this is such a great opportunity for us to be able to commit service into our community, because unfortunately, in our schools and our activities, we allow to be able to do some activities in helping our community. But unfortunately, this really has hand-in-hand contact with also the rec center, the Altschool Council, the Cottonwood Island. Very appreciative of what you guys have allowed us to do. And without this, I, I've never really known what else I wanted to do, and I remember coming into this commission, and actually after this, I actually wanted to study political science and actually getting involved with city members and government, and hopefully become maybe a senator or something at higher levels, because this has motivated me in my community service and wanting to do better in this world. So thank you very much.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, which is appointing these members to the Youth Advisory Commission? If not, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Resolution 2724, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission.
Mr. Pratt, the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, on the favor. Right, opposed? It's your turn, it's your turn. Thank you. All right, I move to pay the payments and adjustments.
I would like to have a discussion.
Okay.
I've got some questions about item number... 10 Street Improvements, line 314. I've driven that road, even though the signs are up on it, there was a way to squeeze through, saw the opportunity, gave a shot, driven it back and forth three times, and I'm really not happy with the finished product. It takes us a long time to save up money to be able to do an improvement that ran, and this was a ground-up restoration of the neighborhood, and I think, I think we could have done better. I'm really not happy with the finished product at this point. And I know there's still some punchless items or whatever that need to be filled in or dealt with. The crews are out there today doing a lot of concrete repair, but the issues I have mainly have to do with the, the quality and the smoothness of the asphalt. And like I said, this is, this was a long time coming. That road was terrible. I just, I think, having gone to this level to put that kind of improvement in that neighborhood, could be a better job. So I'm a little concerned about paying this.
Is something that we, can we discuss this?
Yes, payments and adjustments, Madam Mayor, are on the agenda.
So we can go into more detail if we can, or make more comments. Okay, so do you have any response, Mr. Bartas?
Well, and Mr. Peters here as well, and we had hired an outside engineer to design this roadway. He helped us put together the specifications for it. He has certified that, with a few exceptions, that the specifications have been met. And again, I think it's important to recognize that this is a residential low-speed street, and the requirements and terms of having something, you know, extremely smooth is a lot less than if we were building, you know, Highway 260. And so, I mean, if the council wants to increase those specifications, make sure that every little bump is taken out and roadways have collapsed, you know, we can do that. It'll cost more to meet those specifications. The other thing is, having something that is just, you know, slick and smooth only serves to increase roadway speeds as well. And again, this is a 25 mile an hour roadway. Anything you want to add to it?
Yeah, I had a conversation with the, excuse me, with the design engineer who has certified the road. The road was built to the specifications. 10th Street is not a crowned road, it is not a collector's street as Mingus is, the difference being Mingus has a three-quarter inch base coat with a half-inch top coat on it to make it smooth to handle the additional traffic. Also, there's numerous grade breaks, both if you look at from Mingus or from Main Street up to Mingus, you'll see the amount of topography drop, and matching it on the two sides of the street were also tough. This road was designed for durability, not for speed. And this, we're very cognizant of when people do not like the product we put in, and I verified again today that we have received no complaints coming into public works in my office on this street. And as the city manager stated, we can increase the specs. These are the specs that we brought forward, these are the specs that are for this type of a street, and we will be happy to design to whatever council wants. But when we set a specification out and that specification is met and certified by a professional engineer, the contractor has met his due diligence. I would be happy to go out there with any council members, with the design engineer, with the contractor who built it and look at it. We have been up and down this street numerous times since Mr. Bartas brought this to my attention, and in our opinion, the street was built to the specifications that were meant. Have you had to answer any other questions, Art?
Questions?
I haven't had an opportunity to see that street yet, so I don't feel like I can come one way or the other. I guess if I see that seems substandard, then I think the council probably should consider raising the specs, you know, on roads if we're trying to unify them to a degree that they didn't attain maybe. I haven't seen streets, I can't say.
Mr. Pratt?
Is there a mechanism for perhaps overlaying that payment so we can go see it? I would like to see it.
This is, this is a partial payment.
Okay.
And there's still some due, and I'll defer to the city attorney on this, but we're, I believe, we're actually bound to make progress payments.
Because I would like to see it.
If it's designed to the specifications. We'd be more than happy to.
We believe in the act of rights, too.
And I, I did travel the street several times, and I, I found one spot going that way, going north, you know, that was a little bit bumpy, but I didn't experience the bumminess that you talked about, and maybe it's the difference in our vehicles.
It's our suspicion.
Yeah, it could be that, but I have driven it, and I could hold my coffee cup on it, except maybe one of them's spot, and maybe that's the one they weren't using on. But it was just a little ripple kind of going toward the gas station, coming from the south. But otherwise, I drove the street and I found it to be acceptable for me. And I drive a truck, but not a good truck.
And I don't want to claim that the work was substandard, because I obviously am not qualified to make that judgment. What I'm concerned about is that this wasn't an overlay. I would expect that kind of surface on an overlay project where you're going in and putting it on top of a surface that's had years and years of obulation and, and all the street crossings and all that, and trying to smooth all those issues out. To me, this was a project that's, that's come from the ground up, and regardless of specs, we put out that kind of work, we should get a better product, in my mind, and specs don't really have anything to do with it. It, asphalt gets laid, it gets smoothed out, and it should be smooth regardless of specs. So, you know, this, this wasn't a shit-student project, it wasn't an overlay, this was a brand-new street, and I just had some concerns about the finished product, and we have another huge road job going at the moment, and that's one that's also been a long time coming. And believe me, the 10th Street Improvement is a huge improvement for that neighborhood. But sitting up here going through budget, I also understand how long it's going to be before we're going to have the funds to redo that, and I'm just concerned that that finished product isn't going to hold up for the length of time that we're going to expect it to based on the addition of items. So I'm just voicing my opinion on it.
And I've got a professional engineer that is putting a seal on one, saying this was designed more for longevity than for aesthetics.
So I have a question. If a, if an engineer has actually put this seal, I mean, his reputation on the paper, so that says to the, a street paper that he did it, his job was adequate. So what kind of liability do we have as a council? If we're saying a street is stamped by an engineer, if members are saying that it's not good enough, and yet we don't, we can't put a seal, and we're not engineers, do we have any liability?
Madam Mayor, potentially, yes. There is, there is a statute, there is under Comp Pay Act, requires after certification to payment executed. We have so much time to make that on his hand. So I guess the question is, if there's a legitimate question about that conclusion, that it was done in accordance with all the specifications, but there's no, there's, I guess some anecdotal work, but maybe there's a question about that. But I think the engineer's opinion would improve okay.
Legally?
Madam Mayor, if I could add one other thing. You remember, and I know the city manager remembers very well, 12th Street, which was done very poorly. And we made that contractor come back out at great expense and correct mistakes he'd made. So this is not only my staff takes pride in what they do, the road is built to specifications, it's not going to be light glass. Roads are not light glass. An overlay theoretically is going to have the same base, because you grind a certain amount out, you put a certain amount back down. So I think the discussion, I know my staff would like to have with council, is if you want to increase those specifications, we can. There's a test, they can go out there, we can put a smoothness factor in there, but you're going to severely increase the price of the street. And it's a balance of what is safe, that street is safe. It was designed more for durability than for aesthetics. So we are open to...
If they gave you enough money, you'd like every street to be as smooth as glass, right? So I guess it's, if the council's not happy with the specs, then that's up to us to increase them, which would increase the price of it.
I think you agree, Mr. Garrison, because this was built from the ground up, and maybe we should expect a little bit more, given that it does meet the specs theoretically. And maybe it's time for us to look at that a little more seriously.
And that, and we can do that, and I think one of the issues was that we got the funds for this from community development block grant funds, so we were really, really on a limited budget.
Mr. Pratt?
And so we could approve this payment, and if there are actually flaws, we could have the company come back and say, you need to fix this, like we did with Plough Street.
And there's approximately 90,000 left, Oatman is checked.
And I understand the difference between function and aesthetics as well. You know, we, we actually engineered these kind of things in certain streets to slow people down. Anybody's been on Verde Heights, right? There's a big dip there. Somebody goes, see, it's a lot of neighbors, see, there's a bit of that.
I wish there were some bumps.
That's sort of equal, that, was that?
I wish there were some bumps, too, because they speed through there.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was a perfectly smooth road. Just a little black belt drive.
I've driven that road several times, and I haven't found what Mr. Garrison's talking about, but we'd be happy to get together with him and go out and have him point it out to us, exactly what he's talking about.
Okay.
And then we can decide whether or not that's something that can be fixed, needs to be fixed.
And whether you want us to go down with a general discussion specifically or... Okay.
Even if we don't have to go out there, we work this, I think, for the future, maybe we put a few more guidelines in this, and I, we're pointing about, I don't know if that road done before, and in the future, we're going to have that road be done again. So if it's a matter of the council, city here, and raising the standard of overuse in board, we should have that discussion.
Okay, so point well taken, and now that is special in the future. Okay, so I move to approve the payments and adjustments. The mayor made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, on the favor. Opposed? Okay, I made a motion, well, before I adjourn, I just want to let everybody know, at this point, the meeting, in the meeting, the council will convene into a joint court session with the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. And as I understand it, for this new clerk, the city attorney, this will not be televised, is that correct? Okay, because we have to get permission from all the parents to tell the vice then in the meeting, and so we chose to not tell the vice at this point. So I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, on the favor. Need a cover. Motion, Harris.